I'd like to welcome everybody to the December eighteenth, Carter County Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to ask Commissioner Quinn if you'll lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to ask DJ Hunt, is that Pastor? To lead us in our invocation, please.
Let's pray. Eternal heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you, Lord, for this very opportunity of coming together. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for the season that we're in. God, Lord, we thank you, Lord, for the greatest gift that has ever been given unto man. God, Lord, in his name is Jesus. Lord, we ask you, Lord, now, Lord, that your hand, oh God, Lord, will rest upon this meeting. Lord, lead, guide, and direct in all ways that you can, and you alone, oh God. Lord, we ask you, Lord, that you'll plan ahead of protection around our county. Keep us safe, oh God. Lord, we do praise you, we thank you, and we give you glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I'm sorry, I don't have your church on here. Would you like to say which church you're from?
Senior Pastor at Maryknutha Pentecostal Holybush Church.
Thank you. All right, last, I know, I'm just, thank you, though, I appreciate it. I'd like for everyone to please turn off your cell phones or put them in mute. And I've got just one little thing on my thing here. The Employee of the Month is in that line, we're not there yet, right?
Yeah, we're at call for nominations of Chairman of the Board.
There you go. Claude?
Gentlemen, it's my honor to take nominations for your next chairman. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Jimmy Farrington.
Second. Are there any further nominations? I declare nominations to be closed. All in favor of Mr. Farrington, please raise your right hand. Congratulations, Mr. Farrington.
Thank you, sir. It's quite an honor, thank you very much.
Want to do the Vice Chair?
Yes, that's our next step. Our next nomination will be for our Vice Chair. Is there any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Mark Mansfield as for the Vice Chair.
Second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
That's what happens when you don't show up.
He gladly accepts.
All right, and in accord, in accordance with the State Government Ethics Act, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any board member have any known conflict of entrance, interest, or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the board this evening? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any undue participation in the particular matter involved.
I'm good, I'm all right.
All right. Our next step is to adopt the agenda. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Also make a motion where you adopt the consent agenda.
All those, oops, second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. And I'd like to ask Mr. Nick Wilson to come forward for recognition of October, November, and December Jamie Hicks Long Employee of the Month Award.
All right, good evening, Commissioners and residents. Tonight, we're here to celebrate the outstanding contributions of our exceptional team members who have been recognized as the Jamie Hicks Long Employees of the Month for October, November, and December of 2023. So, first up is DJ Hunt for earning the title in October. DJ, our paramedic operations supervisor for emergency service is the embodiment of excellence. His commitment to our community is truly inspiring. Not only does DJ fulfill his supervisory duties with thoroughness, but he consistently goes above and beyond offering crucial support in high-stress situations. His role encompasses budgeting, program administration, staff training, and maintaining the highest medical standards. DJ's contributions, including securing essential equipment and fostering EMS community relationships, make him a standout member of our emergency services team, and we thank him for his services. So, moving on to November is Brenda DeBose, our Director of Veterans Services. She is a retired technical sergeant with the United States Air Force. Brenda brings dedication and expertise to her role. Leading the Veterans Services Office of Carter County, Brenda manages countywide programs serving over 8,000 veterans and their dependents. Her exceptional leadership is evident in her commitment to enhancing the lives of veterans and their families. Brenda goes above and beyond to ensure they are connected with essential community services, resources, resulting in veterans in Carter County, Carter County receiving over 73 million in compensation and pension in 2022. And next, for December, we honor Detective Corey Bishop of the Sheriff's Office. Detective Bishop's dedication to seeking justice, justice is unmatched. With over a decade of experience, and he has seamlessly integrated into our Sheriff's Office Criminal Investigations Division, enhancing their capabilities. His tenacity as an expert and expertise have set new standards, especially in navigating complex cases and utilizing advanced digital forensics. Detective Bishop's dual role for a federal agency brings a unique quality, earning federal recognition for his work in internet crimes against children. And then finally, we've got an exciting addition to December. We're proudly going to recognize Callie. She is the co-employee of the month for December and is Detective Bishop's co-partner. And this is a trained detective, various electronic storage devices aiding in investigations on a wide range of crimes. From open areas to vehicle, residence, commercial spaces, and vessels, Callie showcases her expertise. So, we're delighted to have her as an invaluable asset, making a substantial impact on our ongoing efforts to combat crime. So, these remarkable individuals, DJ, Brenda, Detective Bishop, and Callie represent excellence within our team. Their hard work, dedication, and commitment to our community are truly commendable. So, at this time, will all three of you join us up front? Yeah.
You got the call. He was sniffing for drugs on the way down the aisle.
What are you going to do on that? Want to put it behind him? Hunter? He can hold them. Did you tell you got a boat? Sheriff? I'll help you hold one up. I'll hold Callie's.
Sheriff's going to photobomb us.
Get in the middle here.
Come on in.
We good? Or not? Cheese? I swear I don't have anything in my pockets. All right, and next up is our public comments. And our first person up is Mr. Rick Goff.
I would shorten the thing here, give Eugene Foxworth a little bit of credit based on the fact that the original plans of the handicap parking out front, he managed to do something with the original plans, now it's, it's just fine. I recommended, in addition, that one day they will, if they repave that area, that they have the access aisle, instead of going behind the vehicles, it goes forward up onto the sidewalk because of the fact that, you know, cars might back over them and stuff like that. So, he says he's going to look into that, and it's something going good with the disabled. Appreciate the commission as well.
Thank you.
Your interest. Thank you, sir.
So, are you happy, Rick? So, are you happy?
Never.
I take that as happy. All right, and our next, our next person up to speak is Mr. Trey Humphrey. If you'll just state your name and address, and you've got, oh, actually.
I was speaking about.
Okay, all right, yeah, we'll just wait for that. And then, Mr. Brian Nicolo is up to speak.
All right, good evening, my name is Brian Nicolo with 1502 Salter Path Road, and I'm here tonight to speak to you on one action item and one information item. I have to say first that people understand when I talk about the subjects I'm talking about, I'm a registered libertarian, and I'm with tactical civics. I'd rather not be up here speaking, actually, I'd rather just not know what I know, so, but I'm compelled to speak to you tonight on these things. First of all, my request for this board is to rid this county of the voting machines based on the following five reasons. Based on security vulnerabilities, based on the high purchase, high price of purchase and maintaining, based on administrative and logistical challenges related to the machines, based on the confusing operation as it relates to the function, and as required, as required by the poll workers and the observation of the poll observers. And five, based on lack of transparency, excuse me, lack of transparency, and the fact that a third party has unconstitutional and unaccountable roles in the citizens' election process. The contracted voting machine company is not obligated to the Freedom of Information Act, or nor they are they accountable, accountable to the citizens directly. Next item I would like to talk to you about is an information item. It's about the J6 community. While you're enjoying your holiday season with your family, it's important to keep in mind the struggles of others, to include those of the January sixth political hostages. There are still about a dozen held in pre-trial confinement, and hundreds others who have been railroaded through the corrupt federal court system in Washington, DC, with over a thousand more charges pending. While we are, while, all this while we have open borders, human trafficking, and unpublished Epstein client list. Remember, there was an estimated that well over a million patriots showed up on DC, and that they came there, they came there in peace, and now that the J6 tapes are released, we're finding out that it could have been, and likely was, a entrapment process. The establishment succeeded in stopping the election objection, objections that day. They stopped in many of the election investigations that day, but they failed to achieve the deaths of any DC police, but they did achieve the deaths of four citizens, and those citizens being Ashley Babbitt, Roseanne Boylan, Kevin Greason, and Benjamin Phillips. How many of you here today thought there was a police officer that died that day on January sixth? Many of you did, that was the propaganda that was promoted, but not one officer died on that day. There is a vigil every night outside the DC prison. These vigils are live-streamed on YouTube starting at 7:30 each night, and it's important to mention what has become a ritual every night for nearly three years, when the hostages still sing the National Anthem each night at 9:00 PM. You can find this on YouTube, Freedom Media Express, and 1791 Stormtrooper. The political hostages know that they're falsely accused, and that they need the voices of the public to tell their stories. It is important to note that many of these patriots were routed up by SWAT team-style tactic, and about approximately 25% of them, J6ers, are former military or former law enforcement background, some of them highly decorated, several of them Purple Hearts. I appreciate your time this evening in sharing that information, and I do want to finally say that it is a good time to be alive because America's waking up, we need to wake up locally, we need to, the, our elected officials to take local action to correct what's going wrong. I do wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right, and our next item is item number nine. It's our presentation of the annual Child Fatality and Community Protection Team reports. Gail Calhoun and Chuck Bryant. Yep, Dr. Wade, we have Dr. Wade. Well, it sounds like everybody's under the weather. All right. You're a good pinch hitter.
Good evening, I'm Gail Calhoun. I am the new chairperson for the Child Fatality Protection Team here at Carteret County Health Department. So, the North Carolina General Assembly established the Child Fatality Prevention Team in 1991. The team's role is to reduce preventable child fatalities by reviewing deaths in children zero to seventeen who reside in Onslo, or, I'm sorry, Carteret County. These reviews are done to examine causes and circumstances surrounding each child death. The team then presents policy changes or actions that may prevent future fatalities through data-driven recommendations, and also to promote community-based prevention education. The team consists of multidisciplinary and multi-agency members. Meetings are held quarterly, and reviews cover the year, previous year's deaths. The team chairperson submits the findings to the state with team recommendations, as well as an annual report to the Board of Commissioners. From January 2023 to December 2023, the Carteret County CFPT reviewed nine child deaths from calendar year 2022. The causes included accidental drowning and submersion in a swimming pool, accidental unspecified aircraft accident, sudden infant death syndrome, other depressive episode unspecified, illness, spastic cerebral palsy, and suicide intentional self-harm by a handgun. The CFPT recommendations based on these deaths include grief counselor, grief and counseling services available to anyone affected by mass casualty situations, to include first responders and other scene workers, follow-up services for children under eighteen who are prescribed antidepressants, instruction and education for the Spanish-speaking population about depression and other topics, safe sleep and appropriate adult supervision of infants and toddlers to parents, families, and general public, develop programs and peer counseling for suicide prevention among adolescents, education about water safety requirements for pool cleaners and installers, realtors, rental, and insurance companies, education for homeowners and buyers about safety requirements of owning a swimming pool, hot tub, or spa, and finally, public campaigns to include safe sleep and water safety. Any questions?
Yeah, we had nine deaths in 2022. It seemed like it was about double from the previous year.
I think there were.
Sadly, 2022 was the year that we lost four of our youth in a plane accident.
Right.
And that accounts for that.
So, those four are included in this nine?
Yes, and that's, but you are correct, five would be a traditional number, unfortunately. And we review all of them, I can't compliment the team enough, they do a very, very deep dive on those deaths, tried to do what they're mandated to do, is to prevent them. The ones that stand out this year were drowning, which were the leading causes of death, insurance, before the age of five, and we identified an issue there that we're going to.
Well, drowning, was it in a family pool, or was it out in the ocean, or what?
It was in a family pool, and.
What was the age?
Two. Two years old. And, and the cause was what we find in those cases, and so, the State Board of Health has put in measures to try to prevent that, and, and we are going to go back through the Health Department and make sure that all realtors, pool owners, pool cleaning companies are very aware of those rules. I think they all are, and there are obviously times that there are gaps, and we don't, we don't want any gaps, so we'll make sure that they're all aware of that.
Dr. Wade, was that two-year-old drowning in a family pool?
Yes, sir.
Was that, was that a, because the child was unintended, or?
It's very, very common in these cases that one person thinks another person is watching the child, and you have fences around pools that are mandated to try and prevent even that when that happens, but if the fence is left open, or there are other mitigating factors, then what we're cleaning up with here. So, what the purpose of this task force is, is to try to make sure that doesn't happen again, and so, we're going to put in measures in the Health Department to make sure, to the best of our abilities, everybody knows what they need to do as far as attending to young children, and also making sure that all the fences are secure. It's an issue in any tourist community, recreational community, you have people coming in using vacation rental homes, hot tubs, pools, they may not live there, and so, we have to be very vigilant, that everybody who has access to those pools with young children from the age of two and five especially, are well aware of the dangers, and that's, that's our intent.
But we only had one incident like such as that?
Yes, sir, and surprisingly, I've looked at it pretty extensively, I know it's something Commissioner Farrington is very interested in, and we've been fortunate in Carteret County not to have this happen often, either in the ocean or in pools among very young children. We certainly had our share of drownings in adults, but we've been fortunate in young children not to happen, but we have 350 commercial pools, including apartments, we have all sorts of residential pools and hot tubs, which are all guarded by these criteria, and we've just got to do everything to make sure that people visiting and others are keenly aware of the dangers involved. Children are curious, three-year-olds are curious, and you have to watch them like a hawk.
You've said you've taken measures to prevent this from happening again, how are you going to prevent inattentive adults?
Well, the State Board of Health has put in the fence that a, a pool has to have a four-wall fence around it.
Say that again?
The State Board of Health says that if you have a pool or a hot tub, you have to have a fence around it, the four walls. Unfortunately, many are fortunately, many houses, the fourth wall is not a fence, it's the wall of the house, and there, by code, there has to be alarms and systems in place so that fourth wall can't be breached, it's acting as a fence. And so, we just need to make sure that all pool owners, all pool inspection companies, I know the pool installers know this, but those have to be alarmed or have special access. And so, in this case, that's what we need to make sure everybody knows.
I just can't imagine a two-year-old being in a pool by himself, I just, I just, I just can't imagine that.
It don't take long.
Well, sadly, it's one of the leading causes of death among two- to five-year-olds in the United States.
I'm saying, thank you, Doc.
And we're in, and we're in a community where there's a lot of water, so, we just have to double down on our efforts. Like I said, fortunately, it hasn't happened often in Carteret County, given the number of pools and the access to water, but it does happen, and one death is too many.
I see you've got one death from SIDS, sudden infant death syndrome?
Yes.
Do we get one a year, a couple of?
You know, the more we learn about SIDS, the less we see of that, but it brings a great point, in this, in this case, we think that the issue of, of how the child was in the crib and the other stuff in the crib was significant, and so, we just have to go back to reiterating our message that we do all the time, and all the obstetricians and pediatricians do, about safe sleep, and also, once again, attention. You've just got to, again, watch kids like a hawk, and so, we've investigated that and identified issues there, and are addressing those with other agencies.
At what age does SIDS stop? Two years old, three years old?
One year, usually around one, is what you usually see at age less than one.
So, any child younger than one-year-old is considered an infant legally?
Yes, sir.
That's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you, and again, I commend the team, I'm on this committee, I go to all the meetings, and we spend a tremendous amount of time investigating, and thankful for our friends in law enforcement, and the Sheriff's Office and others who pretty much assist us, they're often involved in these cases, and we work very collaboratively with them, I think to the community is good.
Let's see, I'm up for the Community Child Protection Team, again mandated since 91 by the legislature, in which we look at our cases that fall under that purview. Again, it's multidisciplinary, and we are looking at those cases that appear particularly difficult, those that involve abuse and neglect, substantiated abuse and neglect, you don't have to read the paper much to see that in other counties in North Carolina, things can get in a bad situation, we're blessed here with Jessica, that we stay on top of these things, but we think part of staying on top of these things is to be vigilant and to. but we think part of staying on top of these things is to be vigilant and to review cases collectively. We're a multi- multidisciplinary team, which we do. I do wanna say, if you look at the recommendations of, of this year, that this is probably a milestone since nineteen ninety-one in that the recommendations, probably for the first time ever, it's very easy to do a gap analysis and identify the gaps and... But they all, if you notice that in almost all of these, there's one word, behavior. It's behavior. And for the first time ever in Carteret County, I was in sea level today with ICGH and the school system. We will be bringing in the solution to all three recommendations that we're making this year, which is to bring in child and adolescent psychiatrists and behavioral specialists to deal with the issues that result, not only in child fatalities, you saw at least two of those involve that, but also, uh, that we're dealing with in our, um, uh, Community, uh, Child Protection Team. Uh, the common denominator is how do we identify early behaviors that are gonna lead to deconstructive or pathologic behavior? And the answer's always been, we don't have enough resources to help them, so we're just going to be stuck with the problem. I do not want, think that will be longer true after February first. Uh, we are bringing in multiple therapists, psychiatrists, providers, um, that I think will go a long way to s- to answering and solving the three recommendations that came out of this year's thing, which is basically finding places for these children who exhibit behavior at risk to get them into an inpatient facility or an outpatient facility, uh, locally, where they're not put on hold and say, well, you know, come see us in six months. We will address them in real time here in Carteret County, and I think that is a great Christmas present to the citizens of Carteret County. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just have one comment. Um, I was having breakfast the other day at the Village Market in Emerald Isle, and I went to the men's bathroom, and on the wall of the men's bathroom, same subject, same, same programs, there's a sign on the wall that says, "A hundred and twenty-seven kids in Carteret County need a home." So, I'd love for that poster to, I'm, I'm sure it's around town. This is through Trillium. This is through, um, Easter Seals. I, I think, I mean, it just hit me. And, um, we need to get the word out, and that is the foster program that we're dealing with, which is a different subject, but thank you for all you do and all your departments. And we're, we're very fortunate to have this man right here.
Amen to that very much.
We're the best hire we've made.
Very fortunate.
Well, again, uh, we would not have the facility at sea level if it wasn't for the seven of you. We will are eternally thankful. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next item up is a public hearing, item number ten. Public hearing to abandon and close an unnamed and undeveloped right-of-way off Pearson Circle in Newport. Mr. Foxworth?
Yes, sir. Gentlemen, if you remember last month, we set the date for the public hearing tonight. Um, this process is prescribed under General Statute one fifty-three A, two forty-one. Um, after y'all set the date for the public hearing last, last month, we duly notified, um, the, the parties that surround that property, both, uh, by mail, uh, by, by posting the property, uh, as well as other means. Tonight, we have a public hearing, um, and at the end of the public hearing, you'll be asked to approve a resolution or deny a resolution closing this public right-of-way. I have received feedback from the public on this. Um, I believe the gentleman's here tonight, Mr. Humphries, um, have received feedback, um, from him, and, but I'll let him speak and glad to answer any questions you have after that. Thank you.
All right. Any comments before we go into public hearing?
I should be going to the hearing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. We are now in public hearing. Sir, if you'd like to speak, and anyone else who'd like to speak can speak after Mr. Humphrey.
Um, good evening. Uh, don't like being here. I'm not a good public speaker, but gotta do what I gotta do.
What did you address, Mr. Humphrey?
Okay, my name is Trey Humphrey. My address is one twenty Pearson Circle Extension.
Okay.
And, uh, my family owns the property just north of this access road that they're attempting to close. You see, it's highlighted here. So my family owns eighteen acres, as you see. Uh, the eighteen acres we're intending on developing, we're in the process of doing so. Uh, it's gonna get within the year's first of the year. This actual, access road you see here was one that was deeded by Mr. Pearson back in early fifties, I'm gonna say, I'm guessing, I don't know.
Speak up, please.
Okay. Well, the access road was deeded by Mr. Pearson back in the fifties when he developed subdivision. It may have been forties, I'm not sure of the date. But, uh, as you see, we have numerous access roads that go from our property all the way to the intercoastal. There's four of them across the, uh, ICW side. No, that's wrong. There's six of them across that side. We have four across the creek, these public accesses. Uh, if this one public access is closed, I'm scared it will lead to possibility of other ones being closed instead of precedent. And that would be very, uh, I think financially harmful to our property. I think Mr. Pearson's intent was for everybody in Pearson Circle to have access to the water. I've got maps of his early subdivision developments that show all of his roads going through, so everybody had access to it. So, I think the gentleman who filed the petition to have it closed, I met with him outside. He says his main concern was public safety of the road, that it wouldn't have been developed, and there's snakes in it and trees that might fall. I told him I'd be happy to handle that, take care of it for him. We cleared it. We weren't intending on using it for our development. From there, uh, let's see here, that's, that's the primary concerns.
Who actually owns that property, the county?
Uh, what, the road?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir. It's actually the county road. I've got a highlighted map here that would show all the different accesses. They're owned by the county.
I see.
There's actually a total of ten of them on the water, and four of them that lead into our property.
They would not be county roads. County, we don't own those roads.
Well, I don't know who owns them. They're highlighted on maps.
Yes, they're dedicated, I think.
They're dedicated to the public. And the original developer of it, the family would still retain the ownership, it's subject to the dedication. Once I record the map, people in the subdivision have the right to use everything that's on that map, all the roads. It's dedicated to everybody, and, uh, it's not public. It's just some people that buy it according to their recorded map.
Mr. Humphrey, let me ask you a question, uh. The only reason that you were given for closing the road was because of snakes and trees?
That's what he indicated to me.
Is it, is it the only reason that anybody else had presented to you?
Uh.
That you know of?
No, not me.
Okay. You, you don't want the road closed, do you?
No, I don't want it closed. We're, we're in opposition to it.
Yeah.
As my father's sitting here, uh, he's actually, this is, this corporation owns the property, it's me, my father, my mother.
Why is this, uh, Mr. Logan, Reo- Logan Rio, why does he want it closed?
He here.
I think, is Mr. Rio's here? No?
He was here earlier and he left because
Oh, okay.
when he found out we were opposing it, he
Okay.
elected to be his neighbor and not a enemy.
Eugene, any information on that? Why would?
I can make some assumptions, sir, but I, I, I'm not asking specifically why.
And what did the planning boards, the planning board looked at it?
This would not get to the planning board, miss, sir. The process brings it to y'all.
So, I, I, yeah, I understand, I got you.
It's a, that's, that's some good forethought when Mr. Pearson laid this out, to make sure that these people could cross the road and they get to the sound.
I mean, uh.
And at several locations, that's beautiful.
We got a public map for the initial layout, but, um, really, we kinda see all the roads going straight through, go straight from the sound all the way to it. Of course, inner flat will not look exactly like this, but the concept of having everybody have access to the water is their intent.
Okay.
So, I think.
And, and, and I have a question. Is it up to Mr. Humphrey to clean the road? Is it, is it, is it because it goes to his property, he should maintain it? I mean, is there, is there any question about that?
It's not his duty, no, sir.
Okay. But you're willing to clear the road?
I told him we're willing to.
Not, not that, not that we're gonna make you clear the road, 'cause we have no jurisdiction over the road besides.
But that's your intention.
But that is the intention.
Now, yeah, I have no desire for anybody, kid to get hurt, bit by a snake, but they're, they're out there, it wouldn't happen. The woods are behind it. He knew it was there when he bought the property. He just acquired the property, I don't know, six months ago.
Okay.
He, he knew the situation when he bought it, but.
As long as you keep it cleared, so it looks like a roadway.
Well, right now, we, we've left it wooded, 'cause most people really have woods beside them and a road beside them. And when we cleared the land behind them, we've left a twenty-foot buffer from our property to their properties, so they don't feel intruded on, okay? I think that's common courtesy. Yes, some people look at it differently, as, oh, you're leaving snakes to come to my house, but I don't know. About talking to each one individually, I can't answer.
Has anybody utilized that road?
The road? Nope. To my knowledge, I was utilizing it probably thirty years, uh, about thirty years ago when I was young and on motorcycles, and we had paths that went through there, but.
It's Mr. Humphrey's property. If he wants to mow it, fine. If he don't wanna mow it, fine.
I agree.
All right, well, is there any other questions for?
Yeah, nobody's using them. No?
Make a motion. We go out of public hearing?
Um, well, the question I need to ask is, is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this?
I'd just like to say that, uh, Mr. Pearson, I knew him back in the old days, and, uh, he just won't see this property developed in its nature with the roads and people have access to the water. And he did a good job, and I, he used to come down there, and I could go all about him. He was a good man. But he, uh, I'm, I'm probably one of the last people that knew him.
Well, we're glad you're here tonight. It's good to see you, Mr. Humphries.
Good to see you.
Like you.
All right.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments? All right, we'll take a motion to.
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. And then, now we need a motion on what we're gonna act on with this.
Sheriff, I'd like to make a motion that we deny the closing of the road at Pearson Circle.
I'll second that.
All right.
Was that worded properly, uh, Mr. Attorney?
It's kinda shaky, but it'll do.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, and then, is there any next steps to this, to make this official?
Yes, sir.
We're good to go? Okay. All right. And then our next item is the manager's report, and our manager is a little under the weather. He is in the building, but he's keeping away from everybody. But, uh, he told me he had no comments, that everything was perfect in the county. So, uh, we're gonna leave it at that. And our, uh, next item beyond that is appointments, and just to make sure everybody's aware, this is gonna go really quick, and you're gonna be out of here in just a few minutes. Carteret County Beach Commission, um, Commissioners, I'd like to table our first appointment, and I'd like to appoint Danny Navy, the mayor of Atlantic Beach, reappointment as the Atlantic Beach representative of three-year term. Any other nominees? All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. If that's unanimous. Consolidated Human Services Board, this is a removal of Catherine Hayes as a board member. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Uh, the Highway Seventy Corridor Commission, we have one reappointment for one-year term. That's Mr. Jesse Benson. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the Tur- Tourism Development Authority.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend Danny Navy, the mayor of Atlantic Beach, and Jimmy Farrington as a commissioner representative.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to tell you that I'm gonna raise my hand for Danny Navy, but I'm not gonna raise my hand.
Oh, oh, you're good.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. So we're all done with that, and now, um, depends on how much the Commissioners wanna talk tonight on how we get out of here tonight, so.
Thirty seconds. We got a lot of time.
We're gonna go with, uh, we're gonna go with Commissioner Shin first, somebody.
I'll make it really quick, so we can expedite this thing. Um, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Hunt and Mr. Bowes, uh, Mr. Detective Bishop on their awards for Employee of the Month. I'd like to also appreciate the report from Dr. Williams, another for the, uh, child fatality prevention. We'll start with that, 'cause I've forgotten how far it is. Anyway, that was a very enlightening report. I thank you for your, for your effort and your time, and, um, they were exactly right. You were a great addition to the team, and I know you've done, you've done a tremendous job for the county. So thank you, sir, for your efforts. So, uh, with that, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and hope to see everybody back next year. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you mind if I make a comment? Would it be appropriate to make a comment?
Um, what would you like to comment on?
I, I think it might be time, sort of time-sensitive, but I'm a mom, and I totally, we've had a little bit of cybersecurity issues with my daughter, who's Anna Kayla, and I'm Jeffrey Kayla.
Okay.
We didn't work as I, we've lived here for three or four years, we've all felt very sad. Um, but we did have some problems with that, and, um, not with those in our case, I have a security department, um, in the county.
Okay.
And I kind of worry that this might come up with other people, um, and they really don't really have anywhere to turn. And sometimes it's accompanied by physical, in-person, you know, encounters that could happen, um, that has happened. And we don't really know, you know, what resources there are, and I'm so sorry to say it at this point, but, um, I just wondered, I know you were talking about the, the child, um.
Okay. Dr. Williams, was it here in twenty-two?
Did you get her name and phone number illegally?
Dr. Williams, well, 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 are you gonna help her with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just to say that my daughter, we, she would never consider, you know, a suicidal, and she don't, we don't even know what drugs look like either. So, you know, just if anything would happen.
Absolutely. We're one hundred percent in favor of doing whatever we can for you.
Thank you. She's a nice mom.
And Commissioner Chadwick is your, is your representative, but
He knows, he knows.
Dr. Williams is gonna talk to you right now about that and get that on there, okay? Thank you for coming tonight.
They were at the Hockley Island Bridge dedication. We married them at the bridge.
My daughter is a writer and a journalist, and she interviewed, um, the, um, Russell and, uh, Commissioner Chadwick, and, um, she's homeschool, and
Great.
So, moved to the community, and I just wanted to, I hope it's appropriate to raise this, so I'm sure we had a chance to do that again.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you so much.
You're certainly good hands.
Definitely.
Thank you.
All right, and then Commissioner, um, Kavanaugh?
Yes, my closing comments, sorry. I'd like to also thank the, uh, three recipients of the Employee of the Month awards. Thank you for your hard work.
I just have to stop you. I apologize, but there's actually four. You're forgetting the dog.
Oh, my God.
I did as well, I'm sorry.
Woof, 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 woof.
I'll take care of the dog. You take care of the other face.
All right. We just came off of Thanksgiving. Hope everybody had a, a wonderful time there going into the Christmas season. And I hope everybody remembers the reason for the season. Seems like Thanksgiving has turned into a celebration of gluttony, and Christmas has turned into a, a grab-bag of, uh, Fifty percent off. Consumerism or whatever. Uh, yeah, we're supposed to be thankful for what we have, our families and all that during Thanksgiving and Christmas. We're supposed to be grateful and celebrate, uh, the birth of Christ and, uh, all the, the wonderful teachings he's passed on down to us. And, uh, has a lot to do with the, uh, the founding nature of this country. The founding fathers were, were deeply religious and dedicated to, uh, Christian principles. The, uh, in a couple of days, we're gonna celebrate the, uh, the winter solstice, be the shortest day of the, the year. And then, uh, after that, on the December twenty-first, the days are gonna start getting longer. And then after that, on the December twenty-first, the days are gonna start getting longer, which is when I celebrate. So we got about ninety more days before the warm weather comes back and the flowers start blooming and the butterflies come out and things get joyful again. If you're really, really interested, I got two inches of rain in Brood Creek last night. I hope you all have a great Christmas and looking forward to a wonderful new year. Make your, think about making a new year's resolution. I quit smoking cigarettes on a resolution, did cold turkey. Of course, two years later, I was smoking cigars and spending three times as much money, but anyway. God bless you all. Thanks for coming out.
Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, Chairman. Again, I'd like to echo my fellow commissioners in congratulating Mr. Hunter Hunt, Mr. DeBose, Detective Bishop, and can't forget the Cali. This marks one year since I came on with this board and it's been a really high opening experience. And we're recognizing all the hard work that goes into the governance, administration, maintenance, all of course, every branch of government schools. That it takes to make this county such a wonderful place to live. Really do appreciate it. I've come to appreciate more of the hard work that was done by these folks. And I'm gonna keep mine short and wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a happy, healthy, and profitable year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Chadwick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Went to the Harker's Island Bridge dedication last week. Jimmy and I attended that. It was very, very nice. Never thought I'd see a high-rise bridge going to Harker's Island, but she's smooth and somebody's already done a burnout on top of the bridge. They've broken it in real, real good, so. It was a very nice event and I think about three hundred people there. It was really cool. They had the schoolchildren out and they run the school buses across the bridge. It was very nice.
Three hundred, that was a whole island.
Yeah. I did want to, Dr. Williams stepped out. I did want to mention condolences to his wife. She passed away unexpectedly. She lived up in Chapel Hill area and I think it's been said here before, but probably Dr. Williams is one of the best hires we've, we've made here at the county. He's spearheaded the recovery center at sea level and he's everywhere. He's at ball games, he's East Carter. I think he even goes to West Carter every once in a while. And Croftown as well, but he, he does a great job for the county. He's very passionate about everyone in the county. Certainly keep him in your thoughts and prayers this Christmas season and
Two bits.
I wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Hope you get everything that was on your Christmas list.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to congratulate the employees of the county for their outstanding job, their outstanding service. And especially want to mention, Dr. Williams, for him to stand up tonight and give the report that he gave in the fashion that he gave it in, very commendable. He suffered an unbelievable tragic loss with no warning, no anything, and he's just, it's devastating. He's, he's, he's a good fellow. He's a, we've all been able to, not only do we work with him, he's a friend of ours. And that speaks why he was about the kind of person he is. He has spearheaded the recovery center down in sea level. He's just a wonderful person. He's truly dedicated to his job. In my opinion, he's one of the best hires that we've based since I've, since I've been on the board, this, this separate years. I just really want to thank him and also want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas. Try to stay safe and stay warm and they say it's gonna get cold. It's the season for it, so Merry Christmas, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and standing up for what you believe in. And being a part of this board, I'm, I'm very humble to be the chairman. I've grown up, born and raised in this county and born in Newport. Thank God my dad was a US Marine.
Hoorah.
And I'm just, just very humble to have the honor to be the chairman and thank you very much for that. Commissioner Mansfield has been, has been on a little vacation with his family. Doesn't take many of those. Closed his restaurants down and his real estate stuff, I guess he's probably out there still probably trying to sell stuff all the way. I called him the other day. He was on the bridge at the Grand Canyon, so he said, "I can't believe this reception." But, you know, glad that he's gonna be our vice chairman. He helps me tremendously, as well as Mr. Eddie Bo Wheatley. He, he helps me get through these meetings. I got them hitting me from both sides, which is great. And Cali, Cali, we'll start with Cali, then we'll go to Ms. DeBose. Thank you so much for all you do, DJ. Now I know who you are. You're the, you're the county, you're the county preacher. And I'm proud of that. And you did a great, you did a great invocation and I'm sorry I got that mixed up, but obviously she's telling me that you're the employee of the month. And I, I, I don't study these, as you can tell, but this month I studied it. I thought I had all my ducks in a row. When I read that, I didn't read the first part right, so.
Then you failed.
I did. That's okay. I'm getting better as I go, I hope.
We give you another year to get it right.
And, and, and to top that off, I didn't sign up to run again as commissioner. I figured that three terms was enough. This, this year, two thousand twenty-four will be my twelfth year. Again, back to my dad, he's, he's in heaven now. Today's his birthday. And I've said this before, but he told me, when I told him I was gonna run for commissioner, he said, uh.
Sure wonder if you were crazy?
He said, "Fifty percent of the people are gonna like you and fifty percent of the people are gonna hate you." And I said, "I think, I hope my odds are better than that." So we'll see how it ends, ten or eleven meetings from now, but it has really been an honor and I cannot tell you how much I appreciate serving with each and every one of these commissioners on this board. We've been through a lot. This county's been through a lot. This has been a hard year for a lot of people. And we need some participation in the county. So we have several outstanding vacancies to fill for these appointments. So if you go online, please look at these and, and, and the main thing is, is if you can't fill these, think of somebody good that could fill these vacancies. You know, it's anywhere, anything from the Planning, Aging and Planning Board, Consolidated Human Services Board, Cultural Recreation Boards, Fireman Relief Boards. They're very important that we fill these seats. So if you can think, look down the list, think of somebody in your neighborhood that is always saying, "God, I wish there was something I could do." And, and, and see if they'll come sign up, okay? And Merry Christmas, everybody.
I got one other thing.
All right, one last thing.
I got one other thing I want to say.
Yes, sir.
You're better than fifty-fifty.
I'll take that to the bank. All right, and we, we have to go into closed session, so get my notes back out here.
Need a motion.
And I need a motion to go into closed session, please.
So move.
So move.
We are now in closed session. Thanks again for coming out.